Bring the surface produce out once in a while.
Good evening, everyone. It's May 28, 2025. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting. Look around and I see everyone is here, so we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a short invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one mission under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation is going to be delivered by Mr. Derek Wynn. Would you please pray with me?
Father in heaven, we just praise your name. We acknowledge you as our creator and as our king and as our savior. And we just thank you for this past weekend, just the chance to mourn those who have died in service. And also just to celebrate their lives and what they've accomplished. And as well, just to thank you, God, for how you used men and women in service to just secure and protect and preserve our freedoms. And we pray today just for your guidance, for your just help with patience as peace as we discuss and deliberate things. And pray also for wisdom and for just your hand in our time as we try to make the city of Shenandoah better. We praise you for your grace, forgive us of our sins, and just thank you, Lord God, for Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. We don't have any speakers. I'm getting the nod.
No, sir.
No. All right. Having no speakers, we're going to move on to item number six. Discussion on possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution recognizing Flag Day and commemorating the 250th anniversary of the United States Army on June 14, 2024 in the city of Shenandoah.
Gentlemen, this is acknowledging Flag Day, which is June 14, and the anniversary of the US Army, as the mayor mentioned. But also to let you know that we've had a group approach us about doing a short event on Flag Day at the Veterans Point. So we're working to put that together, and they would like to have this resolution included.
Nice.
Has everyone had a chance to read the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
I motion, but we accept it.
There's a motion by Councilman Summerlin.
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? I think this is a great event. I think we discussed inviting our veterans as well to let them know that this is happening so that they can, if they have the time, maybe they can come out and be a part of the celebration as well.
We will let them know.
Yeah. And any additional VIPs, also Tamina as well, notify them. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, discussion on possible action to award a contract for the Wellman Road drainage improvements.
Mayor and council, city staff received bids for this project on May 8. And I'm happy to say that the city received nine bids for this project, so we got very competitive pricing. Solid Bridge Construction provided the lowest bid at $102,637. So if you recall, this project is to add some storm line along the Wellman Road, right there between Encompass Hospital. And the plan there is to take care of some of the periodic flooding that would happen in that area during a very heavy downpour. So staff is recommending awarding this project to Solid Bridge Construction.
Motion to approve.
The motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any discussion?
It's just good to get out there with something I requested a couple of years back. And so I'm just glad to see it finally come to fruition.
Any additional comments? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, discussion on possible action regarding the City Hall HVAC chiller yard replacement.
All right, I'll start off by saying this is an unexpected agenda item. Of course, this is related to the HVAC replacement system for City Hall that's going to be discussed at Budget Workshop. Well, things were working fine until our north chiller literally blew up and lost half of its operating capacity. That happened last week on Tuesday, I believe it was. And so we had our service come out, tollleur service, to take a look at the unit. Received a repair cost, which was going to be a complete replacement of our condenser coil, and it was almost $30,000. Staff didn't feel good about spending $30,000 on a unit that then is going to be thrown away in a year's time when we replace the entire system. Just was not a cost that seemed well spent. So we got with Leaf Engineers, who is the design team for the new system that we're having done, to discuss options, contingencies. And from that discussion, we decided that Leaf and Leaf Engineering was comfortable. They were far enough along in the design that they could divert their engineers to finishing the design for the chiller yard itself, which would allow us, if we're able to get funding, which is where we're coming to you tonight, if we could get advanced funding to focus on and replace the chiller yard. The idea being, since it's going to be replaced with the project anyway, how about we get it done now, ahead of schedule? Of course, we'll need advanced funding for that. That way, we don't have to worry about either failure of the south chiller. We have two chillers. And at this point, we don't have any redundancy. So if we lose anything on the other chiller, City Hall will be out of conditioned air, and it'll get hot quick during the summer, which really puts a damper on operations. I know last year we had some issues with our system, and there was a couple of days we had to close City Hall because
Oh darn, some people will be working from home.
We couldn't keep it cool. So we wanted to look at, and again, Leaf Engineering is on board. They can do this. They can work with us for this, is get that advanced funding to replace the chillers. And we can get that done now. Of course, the rest of the project will be still discussed during Budget Workshop, which is going to include the units on top of the roof, any sort of duct work that needs to be redone, heating units, variable air valves. That's still on hold until the Budget Workshop, and we can discuss it at that time. So now, all that to lead into the cost, because it is a lot. So Leaf Engineering put together a cost estimate. They talked to vendors, manufacturers, took the cost of equipment, included some contingency and also installation costs. And that dollar hit at $901,000. $901,600, that's a fun number to say, $901,600. And that includes a five-year warranty on those two chillers and a five-year maintenance program so that you can keep that warranty. Staff is going to be looking at replacing the existing equipment with like equipment. We currently have train. And we're going to be looking at replacing with train equipment.
So these are conventional air conditioning units? They're not some swamp or something?
So these are our chiller units, and their main purpose is to, so we have a chill water system here at City Hall. And their purpose is to get that water very cold, almost freezing. And that is piped to all of the air units, which use that to cool down the temps and cool down your building. So the work we're looking at here is just the chiller yard. We have two chillers on the north side of the building, just outside the police department. And we would just be replacing both of those chillers at basically a year in advance of the rest of the equipment that's going to be replaced once the design is done.
So we were still going to have similar equipment in place?
Right, so everything on the roof isn't going to be replaced until we have our further discussion at Budget Workshop. If council funds the remainder of the project, then that would happen basically on schedule. You know, everything was on schedule until our north chiller blew up. And so we had to pull this part of the project out, and we can call it Phase One if you want, to get those replaced. And all of this was discussed in lieu of, again, spending $30,000 to replace a condenser coil, which we're going to throw away in a year when we replace the chillers with new chillers. So we just wanted to not spend those dollars we're not going to get back and just advance some funding to get chillers in place that will be a part of the overall system overhaul, if that makes sense.
And then those would be the same type of unit that you would use on the other side of the building as well?
Right, so it'll work with
I don't want admin complaining that PD got better air conditioning than they did.
So that's for the entire, entire building. Those two chillers run the cool air for the entire building.
Okay, good to know.
Another component that I've added to this is $10,000 because during this, the engineering, we saw that we're going to need to expand the size of our chiller yard. So you have your six-foot spacing between units and between that unit and your fence line. You just need enough space to vent that hot air and to have enough air circulation that your system runs efficiently. So we're going to need to do some concrete work and some fence work. So I added $10,000 to get the foundation work done so that we can put the new chillers on top. So in total, the ask is $911,600. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is, this is advanced funding of the overall project, which is going to be discussed, you know, here and voted on at the Budget Workshop in August. We just feel like it's, it's a big risk to take to wait until Budget Workshop, and then you got to wait till October 1, when the funds are available. You're going to add five months of lead time, basically, before you even order the new chillers. And that's, it feels like a high risk of this building completely losing air. Now, there's one last thing I do want to add. We do have contingencies in place. The good news is, going back to the north chiller that had the condenser coil blowout, they were able to isolate, so we can run half of that chiller. So if we did have a critical failure of the south chiller, we could run that half of the north. And staff feels like between that and portable units spaced around City Hall, we could keep the space conditioned and workable. So we do have contingencies in place should the south chiller fail before we are able to get redundancy back in place with this new project.
How long could you keep those contingencies in place?
Well, again, it's not tested. You know, we're theorizing that we could, we could do that. If it didn't work, another option is bringing in a temporary portable unit, but you pay rental fees, and that will add up quickly, so we'd like to avoid that.
The project that's going to be discussed in the workshop, my question is, is this number for the chillers that, you know, we're looking at right now, is this basically the same number? Because there's a much larger number for the entire project. So if doing that ahead of time, how much of a difference? Are we paying more?
Got you. So, so there is plenty of contingency built into this, just because we want to make sure the funds are there. That doesn't mean they're all going to be spent. But right now, and I don't have the final numbers yet, but the overall project, the total project cost is hitting at about 2.5 million. So it's almost going to be a one-to-one. This 900,000 we do now is going to be a subtraction from that 2.5.
And just to note, in your agenda pack, this project is eligible for split between CVB and Water Sewer as well because all three funds use this facility. But we can discuss that more during Budget Workshop. That would be over coming now.
I have a question. The chiller, the chillers that are going to be replaced, are they, that type of equipment, that could be hard to get or we're going to have to wait a long time for it or?
Good question. So they were able to hammer down, because we were getting a lot of different stories. Some were scary, like a 50-week lead time. What we're finding is more of a 15-week lead time to get this equipment.
From now?
Right, if we order today.
So you're a four-month, I mean.
Right, if we order today, you're waiting 15 weeks until they're delivered. Then you got to get the crane rental, get that in place and do your transfer.
You'll be into September. You'll be in the mid, you'll be right in the thick of the heat.
Right, so during that transfer, a part of that cost is a temporary, because you have to have a unit that will run the building while you're changing out your chillers. So part of that cost is that temporary unit while they, while they get the old chillers lifted out with the crane, the new ones set in place and repiped.
Joseph, I just wondered, the, this is an estimate. I mean, this, this is a best educated guess right now, 901,000 for the equipment. Is that correct?
That's for equipment.
Because this hasn't gone out to bid. I mean, there's
So that's for equipment installation. There's a water conditioning system, line flush, crane rental, HVAC. It's, it's the whole package to get those units changed out. What, what our plan to do is, and we've had a lot of conversations with Leaf Engineer in particular about the potential of rising costs because of tariffs and the trade war.
Right.
And what they're seeing are that costs are going up because there's uncertainty. And when there's uncertainty, people are going to add cushion to their selling prices. So what we want to do is look at using, you've probably heard of Byboard or HCAC, By, Omni Partners. These are all different co-ops where you can, you can purchase, the products are already competitively bid, which we're going to recommend that be the purchasing mechanism, is use a co-op, because then you're shaving off two months' worth of time for bidding. And typically, I don't recommend this. I recommend bidding. But in this case, I'm actually leaning more toward a co-op because those prices were set months ago, six months ago, nine months, a year ago. Versus if you're doing competitive bidding now, everybody's scared.
Are these numbers calculated based on that program?
Yes.
Rather than going out to bid?
Yes, so we, Leaf Engineering, our contractor, we reached out to these vendors that are on these co-ops, and that's where the pricing came from.
Because you're going to, like you said, you would, not just 15 weeks, but you're probably going to add additional time because you have to go through that bidding process.
Right.
Is that what you're thinking?
If, correct. If we put this out for sealed competitive bids, you're looking at two months because you have to have, you got to put it together, the RFP, you advertise. There's a set amount of time. You have to advertise by law. So by going to a co-op, you're going to shave off that extra time you'd be waiting to go through that process.
So Bill, what is the process of not going out for bid, as opposed to using a co-op?
Normally, we would have to go out for bids, but as Joseph has stated, if we use a co-op, that would eliminate
That alleviates that problem, right?
That's correct.
How about the interest that this billion dollars that we're going to take out of available cash? How's that, what's that going to affect the city?
So currently, out of the, taken out, there's still that 180-day, I think that balances like almost $5 million. This is all available cash of three, almost 3.1. But there is a, there's opportunity to split this project between all three funds that use this building. So it won't be a total hit to the general fund. We can talk about that during Budget Workshop. This is just to get the advance funded, and then we can talk about the payback at Budget Workshop. And also, most likely, this is going to be a progress bill type of thing. It's not going to be an all, I'm not writing a check tomorrow. Or, you know, so there'll be, it's like every other project, it's progress build.
So roughly $607,000, because CVB will pick up some?
Yes.
I'm just taking a third of it, okay.
Yeah, we can talk about the split once we get to Budget Workshop. I can work some numbers, and hopefully we'll get the final estimate from Leaf at that point, so we can kind of just say, here's what we're doing.
And taking that number out of the 3 million, that 3 million doesn't include our reserve fund?
Well, that's our available cash. So typically, like our, your, your revenue expenses are always netting each other for the budget year. That's how we budget. That's why we don't go over our revenues. So that's just kind of funds that aren't allocated anywhere. They're not part of the 180-day reserve.
Right.
Yeah. They're just, it's unavailable, available cash. I mean, it's available cash.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to draw the distinction that it wasn't that 180 days. So we're not, we're not that low.
The general fund's pretty healthy.
Thank you.
Do we, can I get a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
By Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Robinson. I think we discussed it. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine, discussion on possible action to adopt proposed commercial fee schedule.
Mayor and council, as stated in the agenda pack, there's kind of two components to this commercial fee schedule. You've got, since January this year, the city has been using Montgomery County Fire Marshal's Office, based on an interlocal that we've had outstanding with them. And the way that agreement works is we, at the time of the adoption of the interlocal, we adopted their fire fee schedule. We collect the fees, we do the permitting, we process the applications. We notify the Fire Marshal's Office for plan, review, and inspections, and then they invoice us. And so the county recently amended their fire fee schedule. And so as a result of that, staff is recommending we adopt their fee schedule with an additional $50 administrative fee tacked on to cover city staff expenses for the processing of those application inspections. The second part to the fee schedule update is to our building fees and commercial trade permit fees. The fee schedule has been in place since 2018, and so it just needed a little, little updating. And so as stated in the agenda, for the commercial building permit fees, which is any sort of new build or remodeled permits, we're looking at about a 20% increase on that permit fee. That encompasses plan, review, MEP permits, and any sort of administrative processing, and then the sort of occupancy issued at the completion of that. Our single trade permits, we're looking about a proposed increase of 25%. And that includes, again, any plan, review inspections that are necessary. And then our generator fees, staff's recommending just a flat $250 increase. And then on our civil site work fees, we're proposing that fee, that base fee be changed or increased to 2,000. And again, this is specifically just on our commercial. We're not touching any sort of residential fees.
Yeah.
How does this coincide with other municipalities or any other?
So it's, sometimes it's difficult to compare. They've done increases on their fee schedule. But a lot of municipalities, when it comes to trade fees, they don't include those all at the front end. They also have, what we, what we used to do is we did a permit fee and then a plan, review fee as well. And we kind of, when we did this new sort of structure back in 1718, there's no longer a plan, review fee. So it's, it's a full one-time fee paid by the architect or general contractor at the application process, and then the trade permits are free. So it's difficult to compare apples to oranges.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any additional discussion? Is none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I move to item number 10, discussion on possible action to adopt the following ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas, amending chapter 91 of the Code of Ordinances regulating certain aspects of major hospital signs.
Yes, mayor and council, the Memorial Harmon Campus has finished their construction of the parking structure in MLB. And so they are requesting a couple new wayfinding signs internal to the campus, as well as some demoing of existing permitted signs and replacement in very similar locations to this ordinance. So we've got two signs that'll be demoed, two existing monument signs to be demoed and then relocated slightly near the existing location. A wall sign along an entrance that was going to get some, just a modified message. New monument signs internal that you may have actually already seen on the campus that were temporary signs are now being replaced with permanent monument signs. And then two new wall signs on the new tower.
Anything else?
No, sir.
This is recommended by the P and Z?
This ordinance in particular does not, is not reviewed by P and Z. It's an ordinance adopted straight by council.
I'd move to approve.
A second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11, discussion on possible action to adopt the minutes of the April 9, 2025, and April 23, 2025, regular meetings.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Summerlin. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12, discussion on possible actions to ratify the accounts payable for April 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I don't see Mr. Ballmer here.
Right, he's not with us tonight.
He's not with us tonight, so there will be no technical updates, city administrator updates.
I have a couple of quick ones, just a brief update on the I-45 intersection project. Entergy has relocated their electrical lines along Tamina Road in preparation for this project. And the telecom companies are scheduling the relocation of their lines to the new poles, so there's a tiny bit of progress. And one other thing, I believe I sent you guys an email on this, but the historical marker, we're setting up the dedication and the unveiling. We're looking at Friday, June 13, at 9:30 in the morning, so I'll be giving you more details. I reached out to the Historical Commission, and we're coordinating on how that's going to go. So we are going to be inviting the, all the former mayors and various dignitaries and so forth, so that's, that's in motion.
I had one, I had one question under PD. Jake, maybe you can answer this one. It says, we're waiting on an update from the FAA. Just what exactly is that that we're waiting for? But thank you for adding that into the report.
So part of the process for getting approval for the drone program is to get the declaration letter approved and waivers approved by the FAA as part of the process, and that has been done. So at this point, we have a software demo coming up in the next two weeks to help support the tracking of flight log, flight hours, and the training hours for the pilots. And the policy is in place. We've got a couple procedural items as far as just some what to do if this happens kind of stuff that we're finalizing. So making good progress.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kathy, I have a question about the, the June 14th, the Flag Day ceremony. Who is going to handle that ceremony? Is it the city or is it the Sons of the American Revolution?
Well, it's a little bit of both. So, that, we, in fact, John Mader and I have had two meetings so far, and we're doing a site visit on Friday. So, we're, we're getting, we're, we're building that, that program, but yeah, we're going to have kind of some shared responsibility with this event.
See what needs are, chairs, a tent, or whatever, whatever it needs. And the same for, for the historical marker?
Correct, yeah, that, that's going to be us.
And I, now, I've got an email concerning the noise, that if you do it outside, it might be noisy because of the time of day.
One of the Historical Commission board members, Mr. Yura, who is actually a longtime Shenandoah resident, he, he told me that in his experience with one of the previous dedications that they've been involved in is that, and it was also on 45, he said, there's so much noise. And he, I copied you on that email. And he suggested that we do some sort of ceremony inside, and then we go outside to do the quick unveilings, and just sort of trying to speak over the freeway noise. As you know, just walking out to your car, if you're on the phone, you can't hear, so...
Yeah. That's, that's a good suggestion.
So, it makes sense.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. All right. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, item 15, items to consider for placement on future agendas. Does anyone have any items for us to consider?
That's a new one.
It's a new one. It's a new item, replacing the council inquiry. None? Going to move on, going to move on to executive session. The time is 6:32. According to the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code is follows, Texas Government 551.074 Personnel Matters, City Administrator. We are going to break for that, again, it's 6:30. All right, it's 7:11 PM, and we are going to resume our council meeting. Nothing was discussed, no action was taken at the executive session. And so, it is 7:11, and we're going to adjourn the city council meeting.